The pledge of allegiance. And of heart, I, my allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic which stands on the nation, under God, in the vision of the religion and justice of our. Please be seated. Again, this is the Village of Woodbury Planning Board meeting for February the fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. We have no minutes to vote on this evening. We'll go right to the first item on the agenda. Gardens at Harriman Station, discuss status of application for proposed transit-oriented development said property is located state Route seventeen in the Village of Woodbury is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, section two four three, block one, lots one through twenty-five. Good evening.
Good evening, Steve Esposito for the Gardens at Harriman Station. Again, this is an update for, you know, things we've been doing in the last few months since the last time we were here. This period, we've been really focusing on the redevelopment of our wells. We have currently, we have four existing wells. One was OR one, which was drilled back in the eighties, permitted by the DEC way back when in the ICC project. That permit has elapsed. And then we drilled well number two, which we call Caesar's Well during the Caesar, during the gaming extravaganza in the state of New York. They drilled one well, well number two. We also, since then, the gardens drilled, we developed the third well, which is a sand and gravel well, which is an aquifer separate from the rock wells that we have. And then the fourth well is another rock well. And they were all drilled and we, at the current plan, we established our order budget. And our order budget is based on the average demand. And then we also have to produce the peak demand, which is twice the average daily demand with our best well out of service. We had, it was marginal, you know, with, with the yield that we had out of the four wells. So we went back in and redeveloped wells number two and four. Well, number two had a, originally had a yield of about two hundred gallons a minute. It's now, right now, we have a yield of about seven hundred gallons a minute. It went down to about, or six, just short of seven hundred feet. And then well four, same thing, we had a very good development there as well. We went down to about six hundred and sixty-two feet and then we hit about five hundred gallons a minute on that. OR one, as I said, was, was the original well, that it doesn't meet current standards today. So we want to renovate that well back to current, it's a six inch well, we want to ream that to an eight inch well and then also re, re, redevelop it, you know, to consistent with the today's standards. It's in the buffer of the wetlands. Back this past summer, we applied for a temporary disturbance permit to go in there and renovate the well. Took us ten months to get comments from the department. We've responded to those comments and hopefully that permit will be in hand in the next ten months. So we can, we can develop that well. So that's sort of what we, sorry, what we've been doing.
That's covered most.
We've also had a call today, a team call today, and one of the components to our EIS is the, of course, physical analysis, which includes a market study and then, you know, the fiscal analysis with regards to potential impacts to community services. We've been holding off on doing that. We've already done it twice. We think that the market has finally, you know, calmed down to where we, we think we can get a good read on, on, on things in the, to come in the future. So we're going to cut that loose again and that piece will start very shortly. Yes, you know, we've had, you know, back in the past, we've had some great meetings with the, with the staff, you know, and hitting different topics, traffic, infrastructure, zoning. We would like to probably reach out to your consultants again to kind of circle back on a couple of items, particularly infrastructure, sewer and water, and also some zoning items. So we'd like to have the ability to, to continue that dialogue. So we'll probably be reaching out to them in the next week to, to set something up. And that's where we are. So I don't have any questions or?
What? No? So seems like a lot more work still to be done before.
Yeah, I, we're, we're, the good news is, you know, we're very confident with, the big thing was the water piece.
Right.
We were marginal and we are, we, we were, we're super comfortable where we are right now. And obviously, that's probably one of the bigger items to, to tackle. So we're in good, we're in good position there.
Have they just done quantity testing? They haven't done quality testing?
Oh, we've done qua, we've done, been doing quality testing.
And no problems with?
Uh, no problems. Yeah, we did, uh, matter of fact, we did quality tests when we did the Caesar's Well. We did quality tests when we did, uh, well, number three, which is the gravel well, because we wanted to make sure that that didn't, you know, wasn't, there weren't any issues there. And we were, we, we tested to the current standards, which, you know, so, and then we're actually getting ready to do a step test, which will be the first piece of our seventy-two hour test. And I think we're probably going to do, do a grab sample, you know, after our twenty-four hour test on that as well. We've, just to let you know, we've been, and, you know, our neighbors, Napara, not Napara, but whoever they are now, we've been in good contact with them throughout this history, actually dating back to Caesar's and then during the, the, the Gardens period of time. They've allowed us access to their, to their wells. They have, they have onsite monitoring wells. So when we do our, our seventy-two hour testing, we're going to actually, they're going to allow us to monitor their wells as well, to make sure there's no, no interference. Up to today, our, with our tests, we have monitored those and there has not been any, any influence. So we're, hopefully that'll, that'll continue. So, and then just in terms of protocol, we back and forth with our application for our wetlands permits, opened up a whole dialogue with the DEC as well as on the testing issues. So.
As, as you know, government, nothing moves fast in government, so.
No.
Take a while, I'm sure.
Yeah, so.
All right.
All right.
I appreciate the update, we appreciate the update and we'll see you in a couple of months.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I'm going to start selling tickets to it. Fill in the house again. Next item on the agenda, Hartman twenty-two twenty-four Catskill High Rail, public hearing for an amended site plan, special permit, bridge preservation and ARB, proposed shul addition to single family dwellings, and Rob, who's located at twenty-two and twenty-four Catskill High Rail and his own, and is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, section two five four, block seven, lot one and two. This was noticed on February tenth, two thousand and twenty-three in the paper of record. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Michael Morgante. I am the project engineer for this application, twenty-two twenty-four Catskill High Rail. At our last meeting, we went through some site plan comments and issues with both, both your consultants relating to traffic and site planning issues. We went back to the plans and made what I think is a majority of the revisions that were noted in that comment letter in order to prepare these plans for the, the public hearing tonight. I can give a general overview.
If you could, just.
Of the project.
That may not be familiar.
Yep, I'll give a general overview of the project and then we'll open it up to comments from the board and/or the public. So we're at twenty-two twenty-four Catskill High Rail. What you're looking at here essentially is Catskill High Rail on the north side and Adal Lake Fairway on the south side. And you have a little traffic circle, calming circle right there to the west. Currently on the site, there's an existing dwelling. And what's being proposed is to add a five thousand seventy-three square foot shul addition to that particular existing dwelling. The existing dwelling will remain, it will be utilized for sole residential purposes. And then we will have this shul addition to serve the community for a house of worship. This project will connect to existing water and sewer lines that are along Adal Lake Fairway. And we're also proposing a parking area here just to the west of the proposed shul. We've got some walkways located around here and the side of the building with some stairs and handrails. We've got screening provided around the balance of the parking lot so that it's, it's more hidden from the public. We, the site is less than one acre in size. We've, we're disturbing less than one acre of land, so stormwater pollution prevention plan for this particular project's not required. All, all that needed to be prepared was an erosion and sediment control plan. We've gone through the bulk tables here and based on some comments we recently received, we tried to revise them the best we could. Interesting to note that because this is a corner lot, essentially it has two front yards and one rear yard. So that being said, we meet the front yard setback on the northern side of the property with a forty-foot setback that's required. But on the southern side of the property, this one corner of the building over here to the property line is approximately twenty feet. And same thing on the eastern side of the property line, which is considered the rear yard, a fifty-foot setback, I believe, is required. And we're able to provide seventeen feet. But the board and the public should keep in mind that it's a corner lot with some interesting setbacks as a result of that. So even though we are short on some of these setbacks, they certainly not necessarily add a character for the neighborhood in terms of other buildings and their relationship to our site. Parking stalls are nine by eighteen, typical size. We prepared some catch basin locations at the end of the parking lot where it connects to Adal Lake to connect to existing drainage structures that are in the street. We've got a couple retaining walls that are actually proposed along the Adal Lake Fairway side over here. If you look at the grading plan, you'll see them along there. We've graded everything so that it was maintained at a three-on-one. We've had our traffic consultant, who actually is here with us tonight, Star Kip, if we got any specific questions for him. We prepared a site distance analysis table over here. We've got handicap parking shown in the southeastern portion of the site. We have an existing driveway that's being remained, that will remain here for use for parking for the residential purposes. I mean, that's, that's pretty much a general summary of, of the project and the site. I should note that we do fall short on some bulk area requirements. I'll note those right now. So in general, lot area that's required, because we have two uses on this site, the total lot area that's required is thirty-five thousand square feet. We're providing thirty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-three feet by way of combination of the two different tax lots that are there, but we do still fall short. So we'd be looking for some relief from, or waiver from the planning board for that. Again, as noted before, since Catskill and Adal Lake are both front yards, we do fall short of our front yard requirement on the Adal Lake side from forty feet to twenty feet. There's no side yard issues here because we don't technically have a side yard, so they're non-applicable. And again, the rear yard requirement is fifty feet and what we're able to provide is seventeen feet there. In terms of lot coverage, we broke it down individually for the two different uses. So if you look at the uses individually, we actually fall below the requirement of thirty-five percent, but if the uses are combined, we would be more like about forty-two percent. So depending on how your consultants determine that, we may be seeking a waiver for that also. If they're considered individually, we won't need them. And I think that's pretty much the general summary of the project as it stands.
They come up, so, sorry. So.
Stephen Barshav, South Pageant Roselle Council for the applicant. Just wanted to add to that, that you should have received today a letter which explains some of these bulk waivers and connects them to the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act and explains why there should be a reasonable accommodation made to allow the religious use by granting these waivers. And I'm happy to go into that in as much detail or not as the board would want. One point that I would bring up, it doesn't really matter to us one way or the other because we would be requesting the waiver that is necessary, but at least in my experience, typically when you have a single-family residence that is along with a house of worship, usually that is considered accessory to the house of worship because it's used by whoever it is, that is, pick your denomination, minister, rabbi, rectory, whatever, and it's usually accessory. If you don't treat it that way, that's fine, we'll just request the appropriate waivers. But you may want to give some thought to that because there may be precedents that you may want to be mindful of one way or the other in terms of other houses of worship, whether Orthodox or other denominations, okay? So I'm available to answer any questions you'd like about our Lupa and the submission that we made.
Yeah, I think what do, Steve, is, as, after we get through the public comment period, we'll go through.
That's fine.
Because we did get your letter, you know, you were short of the deadline, but.
Yeah, yeah, well.
A, a little bit.
I apologize to that. I had a fall, Chris, on some black ice and I'm happy to be walking with no cast. So I've made my recovery pretty much, but it kind of threw everything off, so I appreciate the courtesy of it getting in late.
Yeah, but what, what we can do is, like I said, after we get to the public hearing, we'll go through the waivers that you're looking for and we can talk about.
That's fine.
Them as well and that.
Okay.
Either way, it will work. We can either talk about it.
Sounds good.
There was, there was one other waiver, I think, that by accident I glossed over. We would be also seeking a parking waiver from about forty-five spaces to seventeen spaces. Forgot that one point.
Right, you can only provide seventeen spaces, right? Okay, and that's sixteen regular, one eight, one ADA.
Correct.
Just so we get to it, we have it all. Okay. Does anybody from the board have comments for the consultants before we go out to the public? Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I have a question. On the.
Correct, yes.
The calculations here, obviously it's both residential, it says eight bedrooms and.
That's correct.
It was based on government, everything?
That's correct.
And the only reason I'm asking is, it says here the shul is five thousand square feet, but on this document, it says eight thousand.
Okay, so we'll, we'll check into that inconsistency, yeah.
Two different numbers. And then throughout the document, the reason I'm asking again, it says some of these calculations do not take into account attendees arriving on foot. What does that actually mean?
I will defer to our traffic consultant to answer that question.
In this document, it says twice.
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, Star Kip, the traffic consultant for the project. The, the note in the, the statement in the report about congregants arriving on foot is our acknowledgement that congregants of this house of worship are known to arrive on foot, especially on the Sabbath, which is on Friday through to Saturday. And we don't take a, take into account that reduction in trips, vehicle trips with congregants arriving on foot. Does that answer your question or?
What I'm trying to get at is that the calculations are based on number of people both on the residential and place of worship?
The, sorry.
Trying to, does it include people that?
The trip generation estimates in our report are actually based on discussions with the operator or the, the operator of the shul and what they anticipate being the amount of, or the attendee, the amount of attendees at the house of worship during the prayer services in a peak hour. So our estimates in there that were, and this was based on a comment from your traffic consultant, was to compare it to ITE, which is the industry publication that we use for trip generation. And in that, they do have a synagogue use and we applied the square footage of a, of a synagogue to that data set. And that's how we determine the estimates. I agree that there is an inconsistency with the square footage listed by Mr. Morgante and what's in our report and we are, we will certainly correct that.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Go ahead and have a seat for. All right, as, before I open the public, Kelly or Natalie, anything you guys?
No, Melissa.
No.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to open the public hearing up. I'll go row by row, then I'll work my way around the room. One, give me one second, I'll let you come up. Dinner's ready? So I'll go row by row, you'll come up to the podium, state your name, where you're from, state your comments to the board, and then we'll go from there. I ask everybody to be respectful, speak directly to the board, not to the consultants or the applicant. And we'll get through the process relatively pain-free. So anybody in the first row wishing to speak, go ahead and step up to the podium, please.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Joel Brewer. I reside at two Adal Lake Fairway, which is a property right directly across over to proposed shul. At first, I'd like to ask if I, I did send an email this afternoon with some minutes that we entered into this meeting and I'm not sure if they received it.
We did get it late in the day.
You did get my note?
Oh, no, you know what? We got one from twenty, twenty, I think.
And then I sent, I follow, so there's another one from myself and I'm.
All right, that one, the building department didn't forward to us yet.
Okay.
So I don't have, we'll get it tomorrow, but I have not gotten it yet.
So if, if you'll get it tomorrow, will it be still considered as part of my public hearing or I have to make all my points now?
Uh, whether it's, it will, it will, we, sorry, like, like I haven't done this before. No, it will be added to the record and it will be part of the public file with, with this and ta, with everything. It's, it doesn't.
Okay, so please be considerate of my email. I've made a lot of important points, which I would rather not disclose in public, but it can be made available to everyone once it's received.
Yeah, the, the building department forwards it to the entire board to read, so we'll all get it tomorrow when they come in in the mornings, we'll all have it to read. And like I said, it will be permanently part of this.
Thank you.
File going forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else in the first row wishing to speak on this application? Second row. Good evening, sir.
Distinguished board members and all my neighbors here and all the community, I would like to introduce myself as, as a local resident and as a local rabbi in the neighborhood. My name is Rabbi Aaron Tyldow. I live in thirteen Adal Lake Fairway. I would like to include in my introduction who I am, from where I come, and most of my neighbors here tonight actually share the same story, so I think it would be just appropriate. As we all know, my parents came from Europe in nineteen forty-five after the liberation. My parents, amongst others, persecuted Jews, were looking to rebuild their broken bodies and souls, to rebuild their broken homes, broken synagogues, which were broken, there were no permits given in nineteen, from nineteen thirty-eight in Germany occupied Europe, no building for synagogues since the nineteen thirty-eight Kristallnacht, which means broken glass. And then they were looking to build their second homes, which is the synagogues. They were looking for a place where they would be able to reside during the weeks and mainly weekends and holidays. What research did they do to take in consideration where and how to start to build their new home from the ashes of Auschwitz? Here's the answer. Their main concern after suffering so much physically and emotionally was in which country will they be able to practice, worship, teach and observe their religion freely without being coerced, coerced, to join an existing established church as they were used to before the war. After intense research, research, with which direction to make their move, they chose a country that it states in the First Amendment, their constitution, that protects its citizens to be able to practice their religion openly and freely. They chose to come to the United States, when they arrived here in the United States, through Ellis Island, they were looking for a home that would be in close proximity to a synagogue, that was their only thing where they were looking for, where they can freely and openly practice their religion according to their belief. Believe me, it wasn't easy for those poor, brokenhearted people until they found such a setting in Brooklyn. And when I was born, this was dedication I was taught. I got married in nineteen eighty-seven and had ten, ten children of my own. I moved to Kirya Joel, which is right close by. When my family grew, and now I have almost fifty grandchildren of my own, my wife and I, we used to spend the weekends together with my children and we were looking to spend a large portion of weekends in a synagogue where we pray and socialize. So my wife and I were looking for a more spacious neighborhood to accommodate us. We chose to live in this beautiful neighborhood of Woodbury. In two thousand and eighteen, my wife and myself were looking for a house adjacent to a synagogue. When I purchased the house, it was the goal to have a synagogue built near to a, nearly to my house to accommodate my large family, especially in the weekends and holidays, where we're not, where we are not permitted by our religion to make use of our vehicles. So now, we ask from our dear board members, please help us rebuild and fix the broken glass from our synagogues, which had, was in Europe broken, here in Woodbury and grant us the permit to be able to have a comfortable place for us to use during our prayers. And we will have all of you in mind during our prayers, that you shall succeed in all your endeavors. Thank you and a good night.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else in the second row? Answer.
Good evening, my name is Moshe Weiss. I also happen to live in the same street, which is eleven Adal Lake Fairway. I'll make it a little shorter. I also used to live in KJ and I'm happy and thankful for, for the board as well as for all the nice neighbors. We, thank God, we have a country of USA where we can practice religion. We have a beautiful neighborhood in the town of Woodbury and we hope that everybody at the board, as well as the neighbors, will understand the importance of, of a house of worship, what it means to us. It should not affect as much traffic as we just heard since most of the uses are done during the weekend when we are not traveling, so that's the importance of having it in the vicinity, close to proximity to our houses. Again, we, we should be working. I have a few boys that we go every weekend in the same shul. From time to time in the holidays, my wife would also go. So again, I would appreciate the thoughts and the importance of granting us the use of this upcoming shul. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the second row wishing to speak? Third row. And this is where the rows get kind of wiggly waggly. So fourth row? Fifth row? Anybody standing in the back? Anybody standing in the room? Anybody? Go ahead and then we'll work our way around, okay? We'll work our way around this way.
First of all, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Members. My name is Benjamin Green. I live right across the synagogue, thirty-three Catskill High Rail. I'd ask the board, of course, to allow the synagogue, where all of us are hoping to be increased. And as a neighbor, I mean, I'm a next door neighbor, so I'm very confident, even though that I'm a neighbor, that there won't be any traffic. And please the member, the board should grant no shul.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Continuing this way around the room, anybody? Anybody back by the TV, sitting down? Anybody? Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, my name is Joel Ziegler and I'm a resident of Woodbury Junction. I first want to thank the board for bringing this petition application to your attention to consider it. We basically heard from other residents, I will just throw away my ten cents. I live in this neighborhood already for five years and we actually never had too much of a big problem with, with the traffic. I would ask the board to give a special, a super special consideration of the brave rabbi and the congregants to come out and bring an actual application to the board to legalize a synagogue. And this should be a sample and a symbol that residents wants to work with the board and with the town and do everything possible to make things work. I would just add on, as they said, most of the services are being done in Saturdays and high holidays, which electronics and traffic is forbidden to drive a car. Even though in the weekends, by the Jewish law, it doesn't have to be more than ten people to, to do a service at a time. Therefore, there is almost no such a thing, there's going to be more than ten or eleven cars. And most of the times even less than that because I would say most of the congregants are neighbors which are in walking distance. So as a resident perspective, as a congregant perspective, as I'm using this place, I don't think there's going to be any traffic problem. I don't think it's going to be any harm or noisiness for the neighbors. I would thank you again, thank the board for taking this petition and would ask you for a rapid and smooth approval. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There was another gentleman. Yep, come on up.
Good evening, there are members of the board. My name is Morcha Schwartz and I live right across this property. I'm living at twenty-nine Catskill High Rail and I would definitely ask the board to please vote yes on this application. As a close neighbor of this property, I see not only that this is going to be a benefit or plus. or plus for the community, it's definitely a necessary, uh, to have our families a nice and big and comfortable and safe place, uh, to do our prayers and our services during the weekdays and especially on Saturdays and holidays. So, that's my only comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anybody else in the room wishing to speak on this application? Go ahead.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mordechai Wiesberger. I reside at fifteen Katskal High Rail. A little bit different than the other people that are coming. I'm coming now from KJ, but my religion is from Montreal, Canada. Just wanted to thank the ni, the board of Town of Woodbury, which they try until now to accommodate the needs of all the neighbors. But as I, coming from Canada, in Montreal, the same thing, that when there is a good worship with the town and the village, the people, the communities are only helpful with all the necessities of our people, and the same thing, the village and the town and the municipalities are only happy and fortunate with having us as residing in their, in their village, which in our knowledge, we try very much to respect and to live together with all the neighbors and not bother any neighbors. Just for the understanding for the board, as people, every, every family, everyone in the world has needs, for us, the needs of a synagogue is as important as for different people and different, different, different people at gym, or a bank, or to go exercise and all on the other in a pool. For us, the first necessity, as the people before have said, is to have a synagogue, to go a place, to go to a place of worship day and night. And as just a personal thought, I want to add on that it will be totally different with the traffic. Until now, if they have only a small synagogue, I myself drive every day to Monroe, and a lot of my neighbors are doing the same thing, to go to KJ, meaning that's much more traffic in the surrounding roads and the surrounding neighbors, which we need to travel all the way back to KJ to have a normal synagogue, to have a normal place of social, to be socialized. If the board will, uh, give us the permission to build a normal house of worship, the traffic will be only lower, because all the neighbors won't need to travel, to travel all the way back to Monroe to have a normal place to go to the place of worship. So I won't, I will only tell you thank you, and I hope so you'll take in consideration our personal needs, and we will take care of, of the municipal as well, with all our neighbors, and to be, live and be proud to live in such a nice neighborhood as Town of Woodbury.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anybody else in the room wishing to speak on this application? Going once? Going twice? Third and final call wishing to speak on this application? I want for a motion to close the public here. Second, any questions? All in favor? Hi. I will note for the record that we did receive late today one more email from, uh, Benson Herschewich, and I'm sorry if I got the name wrong. Uh, that will be available on the building department for review and part of the file, if anybody wishes to review that as well. All right. I think, I'm gonna go, go over substantial burdens?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, um, we really are in the final stages of this application, and I do want to thank the congregation and their consultants for working with the village and working with this board. I do know it is a long, lengthy process to go through the approvals and required studies and everything else that has to take place in order to make everything legal. So I do want to say thank you for you, for working with this board and working with the village on that. Comments have been addressed on the site plan, we've reviewed ARB, we've reviewed Ridge Pres. To me, the last items we have left to review here are the substantial burden, settle. Oh, I see, going for the microphone, I thought you said something wrong.
No, no, I just was sliding down. I'm just gonna.
Okay, so, uh, go ahead.
Sorry. I'm also losing my voice tonight, so I apologize.
That's contagious.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, you know, let the board know, obviously, you know I haven't prepared a memorandum for this evening. The site plans came in a little bit after the typical deadline, which you would typically require materials be submitted two weeks prior to the meeting. Um, so we have not had a chance to review the current bulk criteria and the waivers that are being requested, um, and additionally, either the substantial burden letter. Not to say that we can't discuss that tonight, but I just wanted to let you know, um, you know, whatever is discussed.
Yeah, I, I think we could talk about it.
Yeah.
Let's get them out on the table, let's see what their, what the request is and what the waiver is.
Sure.
And then we could always do what we normally do, either like a follow-up letter, if there's some, uh, real discrepancies in what we need, what was requested and what was needed.
Okay, 'cause I know, um, that there were some good questions raised by Mike and, and his, during his comments about, you know, whether or not the coverage would be applicable for both uses or one, and you already explained that that's, you know, it's for the lot, so it's thirty-five percent for the lot. Um, and then also, I know Jay mentioned about whether or not the two uses would be considered, um, you know, either accessory or two principal uses on the lot. So just for the public's benefit, and, you know, the board knows that this is not the first shul in, uh, single-family residence that has been proposed, um, and you have received an opinion previously that these are two principal uses on one lot. So, um, so some of those things do impact how the bulk is, uh, you know, complied with.
Yeah, okay. No, I, I get what you're saying. I just, I think for the most part, we know it's not, the design's not gonna change. So if we, if we get into, if we're like forty percent versus thirty percent, or, um, you know, I think we can kind of work through those, work through those numbers and those issues. All right. Well, it's, the parking, I think, let's start with the parking. To me, that's the, always the easiest one to, uh, request. So they're able to provide seventeen spaces, um, sixteen regular and one ADA. I think, based on the couple of times I've gone past, with the amount, I think it'll be okay. I think it'll be better than what's there now. Right now, they're, everybody's parked in the driveway, parked on the curb, and this will at least give more room, uh, for people to park. So, as, you know, and what I'm looking for the board here, if there's any real concerns or pushback, uh, that may impact the design or the plan of the shul, because, you know, we have gone through several reiterations of this at this point. So is anybody concerned about parking or the granting of a, of a parking variance waiver?
I don't see that there's really much you could do in sight as far as more parking.
Yeah.
So it's kind of maxed out in configuration.
And I think that's kind of like the, what we're in right now, is the site, the way the site is designed, the way the site's laid out, I think they've gotten every square inch of parking without creating more impervious surface or, uh, encroaching on anybody else's property than they're gonna get out of it.
In a practical sense, the residence directly could be used by people attending the shul.
I'm sure the rabbi will have his car there.
I'm just saying, it's less of a concern.
Okay. The rear yard setback, they're looking for fifty feet. They need a seventeen, they, they need seventeen, uh, they only can only provide seventeen feet right now. Again, we, we did have the late letter, I know Steve can come up and speak to it. I'd hate to make you get up and stand. So, if you weren't able to get the setback, why wouldn't, what, what would happen?
The, the way that I des, I think, and I'll just put this back.
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, Kelly, you're going back behind the veil.
So, as I understand it, this is essentially taking the existing single-family home that had been there for some time, had, as I recall, um, had been used as a shul, had even gotten site plan approval from this board for a shul, and then it didn't quite get formalized. Um, so, some of this is kind of written in stone already, and then you have the unusual configuration of the lot. Uh, it's not exactly a normal lot, and you end up having, um, a, a rear lot that is basically where the property and the improvements are, as I understand it. So I think what you have, and you look at this footprint, this is not exactly a large, huge building. Um, it's, I think it's pretty much the minimum-sized building that this congregation could use. Um, it's well-designed, it, it tries to stay away from both of the streets, and you end up having to have it be a bit closer to this rear yard than perhaps would be ideal, but something's gotta give somewhere. So I think the problem is, is that if you were to take that setback and look to increase it, you would start to shrink the size of the building, or you'd force the building to be further invading other yard requirements. So it's a question of which, which is the best design overall, um, because you're going, it's like you squeeze in one place, it's gonna come out on, in another. So I think that the, in terms of the substantial burden, the substantial burden is, it has to be, that there have to be waivers, because otherwise, you just can't accommodate the building. And if you're going to have a design that's intelligent, I think this is the one that is most intelligent, and certainly, we haven't seen a plethora of people coming out from the public saying this is a horrible design or it's gonna affect them. Does that answer your question, Chris?
It does.
Okay.
When I'm looking at this, you're not really changing much in the footprint.
Correct.
You're not changing. The only thing that's being added is the new debt.
And, and I see here it says proposed shul addition. So I believe that there is, part of this is an addition.
Yeah, the left, the left side towards the parking lot is new.
Right.
So the, the right side was previously, was previously approved. They had gone before this board, they had gotten approved for the right side, and that, for technical reasons, that lapsed.
Right, and that's where the seventeen.
But this looks like a new approach.
No.
And that's where the seventeen feet is, is, and that existing spot.
And I did check with the building department, there's been no, they have no complaints. They have no, nobody's filed any complaining that it's bothering them, so. And again, you know, you have, it, it is a weird, it is a very weird configuration with the two front yards, because it is the, the corner, that corner lot there.
I also want to add one point there. The seventeen feet, what we have, is pre-existing.
Yeah.
The reason why it's now a rear yard, originally, we had here a lot line.
Right.
So we removed this lot line, so this comes from, so now we deal this as a rear. So actually, we're not, um, we're not coming in into this, we're not doing now the seventeen. It's pre-existing.
Right, you, you, you were able to purchase a utility parcel, so you were able to do the lot, make.
Yes, but in.
But that never changed, that was there when you came, we talked about this two years ago.
This was a side yard.
Right.
Side yard is fifteen, so the building was placed at seventeen feet. Now, it becomes a rear, because we have, from, from the front, we have three fronts. So this is the reason why it's seventeen.
You know, I remember when you, when we originally went through the process initially for this, so.
That's right.
None of that's changed.
And, and as a matter of fact, as my recollection was, everybody was very happy when what was referred to as the UTV parcel, they actually became a part of this, because it's what enabled the shul to be able to provide the additional parking.
Right.
So, and, but then you get, what was just said, is then you have this oddity of, you're not changing the buildings, but the lot lines get defined differently simply because of where the orientations are.
Well said. Want to flip?
I think you'd do a better job up there than I would.
I don't legally as well. So now, with the, we have the front yard setbacks, the code requires fifty feet, the current plan shows forty and twenty, um, and again, this has two front yards, because, as Mr. Bershaw just explained, because now this is the corner lot, we've gone to, to, we have two front yards instead of a front and, uh, a backyard or a side yard in this case. Yeah. Again, I mean, I've gone up there, and I think, given the plans that they've, they've given us, the landscaping, the retaining wall, I think it's gonna be, right now it's just dirt, parts are full of wheat. So I think, to me, it's an improvement to the community, it's an improvement to the neighborhood itself. And again, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't really see a reason why it would be a, a big deal, or why they couldn't have a waiver for the front yard setbacks. I don't think there's any other plan that's gonna work, that's going to accommodate the congregation's needs. Now, the last, it's done, now Natalie, this is the lot area, this is one where it gets a little tricky, right? Because of, we have to figure out what the coverage?
Right, and I, and I think, listen, however, if you've gotten an opinion that in terms of lot coverage and lot area, lot size, and so forth, and the two principal uses, again, as I said to begin with, we'll go along with whatever opinion it is that you had. It's simply, either there will be a waiver needed or not, depending upon whether you treat it as two principal uses. So if that's how you're gonna treat it, it's okay.
Just one thing, you, you have historically, as Natalie said, treated it as two, oh, that's okay, you can leave it up there. As two principal uses, but I just want to note that lot area and lot coverage would be two separate waivers that you're considering.
That's right. So they would need one for lot area and lot coverage based depending on what we?
Yeah, they would need one for lot area anyway, because they have, uh, they require thirty-five thousand square feet for both. They have thirty-two, four sixty-three. I don't know the calculations for the lot coverage, that was the one that was talked about as, as, uh, being up in the air, I don't have the numbers handy.
I, I mean, I could comment quickly on lot coverage. Like I said before, I had split them up into the two different uses, but if you add them together, you'll get the total lot coverage that's required for a waiver from the board. I think roughly it's, when you add them up, it's about forty-two percent.
Not that we don't trust you, but we'll have our, we'll have our own engineer verify that one.
You absolutely should, but there, there is going to be a waiver that's required for it.
Okay. Go ahead, Steve. I mean, I don't really have anything else to say, so.
It's a needed use.
Mr. Chairman, there's one thing that I would like to say, that is really not specific to this application, it's been talked about obliquely, but I'd like to make it explicit. It's really important that there be a good working relationship between planning boards, zoning boards, and the Orthodox community. Um, as you know, I represent others in the Orthodox community. I want my clients to feel comfortable that they come in, and this board is a professional board, you take your responsibilities seriously, I've always seen you be fair. I want them to know that they don't have to do things outside the law, that they should be coming in, filing applications, coming to you, and all of the things that you heard tonight about doing something that's important for the community, it's just as important for the community to come forward and file applications with these boards, so that everybody works together, everybody can create shuls that work for their own community and their own neighborhood, but also people can understand that there are rules and they get applied. So this is not just about this application, this is about setting a precedent for the village and making sure that everybody knows, that, I'm gonna say it in Yiddish, there can be a shirach, okay? We work together, okay?
And we appreciate that, and like I said before, I know government's slow, nobody, nobody likes to deal with government, everything takes time, and unfortunately, there is, there is back and forth and reviews and hearings and legal requirements that we have to meet. So I know people get frustrated at the process and why did the process take so long? Uh, we do our best to try to move the process along as fast as we can, but, you know, our hands are tied sometimes. So, again, I do appreciate your congregation coming back. We were with you a couple of years ago, we're back again. Um, you know, you've, you've fulfilled what you're supposed, you said you guys were gonna do, so we appreciate that. I mean, I don't have much else to say, I don't really see any reasons to hold up the application as far as waiver requirements or, uh, lot coverage. It, it's going to be what it's going to be. Be like, go ahead. Yeah, so do I.
Like you said, it's a better use of land.
I think it is, too. Yep. Can we do draft, and then just have Natalie?
Yes, but before you do, I just want to make sure we complete seeker first.
Right.
You took the words out of my mouth.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep, I just have a question for Natalie. Clarification question. Being at Pride of Men in the Nation today, in this document, it doesn't count for the people that walk there and suffer these statistics. How do we determine capacity for the, for the total infrastructure, because it's both residential and.
So, um, I haven't read the revised document that you're referring to, but I believe it's the traffic study. The applicant has represented that this is a shul for sixty worshippers, which is what all of the water and sewer demand and, you know, those types of calculations would be based off of, is that sixty, you know, worshippers. Um, but with respect to the traffic study, I think, um, Stark's point was.
But with respect to the traffic study, I think Stark's point was that they were being more conservative by not including the pedestrian traffic and saying that it would all be by vehicular trips. So, I mean, he can correct me if I'm wrong, but. And also, again, I have to review all of the revised materials and update our prior comments on this application. So, you know, I may pick up on some of the same things that you're saying now, but I haven't had a chance to go through it.
Sixteen that we previously put to all
Right.
That's still the number?
Yes, that's my understanding, that has not changed.
Okay, and then my second question is, the shul environment that we got in February.
Mm-hmm.
Did we discuss this?
We're going to do it tonight. We'll get there. Oh, why don't we go right, we'll go right to that right now. I'll make a motion now, this board declares itself lead agency on the secret.
Assume.
Assume, what did I say?
Second.
Sorry, second. Any questions? All in favor? All right. All right, you want to do the E A F, Kelly?
Yes. So I prepared for you a short E A F, part two, as per my usual practice. If there's a little arrow on the right side of the page, that indicates that there's a potential small impact, rather than no impact. And this is based on the F B A F, part one, that was provided. I didn't come up with any moderate to large impacts may occur, but there were two potential small impacts. And that was, will the proposed action create a material conflict with the adopt, with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? I put that down as a small impact, and that's because they were requesting substantial burden waivers. So it is in conflict with the code, because it doesn't comply, but they're requesting those waivers. And the second is, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? And that was a small impact. And that was because they were constructing in addition. Then going on to the part three, I had that no question in part two was responded moderate to large, so no additional information was needed. So I don't know if the board has any questions on that.
I have a question. On what?
Oh.
It says, does the proposed action exceed New York State energy? It says yes, but, and then it says if it does, please describe the design features.
That would be for the applicant to respond to. They, they would have prepared that. It sounds like maybe there was a little confusion with the question.
That's right.
Yeah, so if they're saying that it's not, that it's going to meet and exceed, and then they just wrote it again.
Yeah, that, that might be just a typographical error, but it, it's, it's intended to meet or exceed New York State Energy Code conservation requirements.
That sounds like a typo, that sounds like a typo then.
Yeah, well, some of the questions are written in a really confusing way, so.
I've been doing this for five years, and I still trip myself up. I can't imagine how you don't, you've been doing this for all those years. Any other questions? Okay. See, I'll get us an, you'll get us an amended part two. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns from the board for?
No, so if you have no other questions on that, you can adopt the part two. And if you would like, you can make your determination of significance with a issuance of a negative declaration.
So I will make a motion to adopt the E A F, part two, with the minor correction that was just brought up.
Second.
Second, Mike Evans, any questions? All in favor? All right. I will also offer a motion to issue a neg, the deck of this application. Second, any questions? All in favor? All right. I know there's, Natalie, I know there's some numbers you have to review and go over. But you can make those.
Right, so typically, we would, you know, potentially list somebody based on the material submitted. So we've already received those materials. I think that you have a full agenda for the March first meeting, correct? So presumably, then, they would be listed on March fifteenth, and we would be able to provide our comments for that meeting, if that makes sense.
That makes sense, but I also, and I'm just barring you coming back to any big comments that need to get fixed. So what we can do is I'll offer a motion to draft a resolution of approval. Again, it's just a draft resolution of approval, waiting for Natalie to review the additional material. And if there's any other items that need to be corrected, we can hold off on.
Chris, sorry, it's me tonight. The, this is also subject to the moratorium, so unless the applicant secures a waiver from the village board or demonstrates that they're not increasing the water usage based on what's existing to what's proposed, which for this application, there will be an increase. So that is one other administrative requirement that the applicant will have to
But they can, they can do that in tandem while we, while you review, and
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So I think, I think the good, you know, we'll plan on having them listed on the March fifteenth agenda. We'll provide our comments. In the meantime, they can proceed before the village board under the moratorium and request relief.
Just for, for Steve and Mike, the village board processes those requests very quickly. So if you're able to get in your request, they meet next Thursday. So if you're able to get in something short by the end of the week, you might be able to squeeze onto that agenda. But no promises, I know no promises.
No, I know, I know, we're not making any promises. This is what I said about government moving slow sometimes.
Yeah, so.
Just so that I'm clear, because I haven't done one of those requests. So would I be out of line, Kelly, in saying that, if, if it in fact does pass tonight, that a motion was made to have a resolution of approval prepared, not adopted, but that on that basis, we're requesting the waiver of the moratorium from the village board?
Sort of, so they would be, they're, they're authorized in the drafting of the resolution, and on a separate track, they, they're not going to be able to take any action on that until either a waiver or exemption is granted. And I can send you the local law and the resolution with the exemptions, to the extent that that's helpful for you to prepare.
Okay, that's fine, all right. So then basically, what ends up happening is, assuming you would want to go forward and eventually approve, we would need the moratorium waiver first, or the board could not take its formal vote.
Right.
Right, we can get you to the finish line, but we just can't cross the finish line. And so we hear back from the village.
I understand, thank you.
If the draft resolution could have contingencies in it.
But not for the res, but not for the moratorium?
Not for the moratorium. Yeah. So that's what I'm saying, I'm just trying, because I know we've got, March's first meeting is dedicated to the shops, so we're going to miss that meeting. So this way, if we have council draw gives Natalie time to review. If there's any big changes that need to be made or brought to the board's attention, you have the time to work those out. And then hopefully, they get in front of the village board, so that when we come back here on the fifteenth, if the board is so inclined, they can adopt the draft motion of, of approval and not push this into what would then be the April, the April meeting. Okay. Makes sense to everybody? Okay. So I'm going to offer a motion to drop the draft, have council draft a res, draft a resolution of approval. Draft, resolution of approval. Draft, draft. Second, any questions? All in favor? Okay. So we'll see you back at the March fifteenth meeting regardless.
Thank you very, very much.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Chris. I would want to thank you again on behalf of the community. And I'm very impressed of this entire board's professionalism and mindful way of acting on it. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, just give that room a minute. There's an old saying, you don't have to go home, but you can't stay here. Just, we have other applicants who want to move. So if you guys just want to have conversations, I just ask you to go out into the hallway, just so we can keep the meeting moving, please. Next item on the agenda, Inglésse en Cristo. I know I completely screwed that name up. A R B, review revised documents submitted for the construction of two steeples on the existing church building. Said property is located five twenty Route thirty-two in Highland Mills. It is known as the Village of Woodbury tax map. Section two two zero, block five, block seven. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, everyone. My name is Nick Angeles. I'm the contractor of the church. I'm standing before you tonight since the architect who was here before cannot make it. So I do the construction aspect. We were granted first the interior renovation of the building. We have the permit for that, and now we're adding two steeples with the area of, per steeple is four by four. The sixteen times two is thirty-two square feet. The church, which also I am a member of, is more than a century. And in that span of time, we construct and renovated a lot of chapels all over the country. I know for a fact that from the last meeting, you questioned about, you're not questioning, but you mentioned that the color allowed is only four.
You're referring to the seal, correct?
Yeah, the seal.
Okay. Well, yeah, the question we had was, is that the logo of the church?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, now, we're repairing to that.
No, 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 but it makes, that's why I'm asking you, that's the logo of the church.
Correct.
Because it makes a difference when we have to look at it, so.
Correct.
Okay, so that's the logo of
The logo, we call it seal, but it's a logo of the church. The logo is integral part of all the church buildings. As a matter of fact, I, I brought with me some of the pictures having the logo. This is everywhere.
So these are other congregations?
Yes, this is the same congregation. And we just beg the board to, what do you call it? To consider this logo, even though it doesn't conform with the requirements. And another thing is the, the steeple. During the last meeting, we were asked to submit the colors, which already did.
Yeah, we have them up here.
Yes, actually, the color is just three, except the logo. And it is within the requirements of the community.
Let me, so the color is not, that you submitted the top?
Yeah, that's actual color and actual material that we're going to use. Correct.
Does anybody from the board have questions for the applicant before we go to Natalie?
Yeah, I have one question, not relating to the colors, but to the height. I'm just curious why you wouldn't go higher, because
I think before we designed it, we talked with the building department, and they told us the highest that we can go, which is the one, is thirty-five feet, I guess?
Yeah, that's, thirty-five is the max height in that, so.
I thought it was measured to the average roof height of the pitch roof. But I'll defer to
That's whoever that was.
Just curious, yeah.
So you, you can notice, every church that we have has two steeples. So we're begging you to please, you know, give us the right to, to install it.
Understood. Please, please don't take anybody from the board trying to give you guys a, a hard time with, with this. This is just a normal review process that
All right.
Everybody goes through when they want to make changes to the exterior of the building. It's part of the A R B review process. So there's other gentlemen here that are looking to do additions in our home that are going to get the same scrutiny that you guys are getting tonight as well. So nobody's, nobody's looking to give anybody a hard time here.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Natalie?
Yes, so we did provide an updated memo on February ninth. And I know after we provided our memo to the board, there were new materials that were submitted. So again, I apologize, I have not had a chance to go through them in any detail. However, I think that our comments at this point are relatively straightforward and have been mostly addressed by the applicant. So previously, we had asked for a site plan and bulk table to be provided. That was provided as part of the materials that we reviewed for our February ninth memo. In that memo, we noted that the plan was not prepared based on a survey, but based on what we could tell from Orange County tax maps and Google Earth imagery, the dimensions in the bulk table were correct, approximately correct. And with respect to any waivers or relief required, there is none for this application, so that's good. That they don't have to get any waivers from the board, they are complying. There was a minor correction that needed to be made to the bulk table, and I imagine that with the new materials, that was addressed. With respect to A R B, the applicant provided photos of the neighboring structures for you to consider your similarity and dissimilarity criteria, excuse me. The signage, the area of the two signs is complying, so that issue is resolved. We've asked that the applicant confirm the lights will be turned off at midnight, and that the lights will be lit with a white light per the requirements of your code. And then, just to reiterate, the board has the authority to modify the number of colors permitted on any one sign, you know, as long as they're found non-distracting to drivers. So presumably, the board can discuss the seal and, you know, that waiver if necessary. And then last, we did circulate the projected water and sewer demand forms, so that issue is resolved. And then I think the only two outstanding issues are, a public hearing, either needs to be scheduled or waived as permitted by your code. And I think you still need to make a secret determination on this application.
Yes. And we are waiting for the G M L to come back. I know we sent the, well, it's been thirty days.
Yeah, it was sent on the tenth.
So come, I don't, I don't, we may have gotten it, I don't remember seeing it, but they've had their thirty days to All right, so how's everybody feel about the project? Do you have the, do you need CDs?
Yeah.
So we have the samples, the boards that they're going to be using, the renderings. I think, I think it's going to make a church that's a little bit rundown look a lot nicer.
Yeah, very nice.
It's nice as well, so.
Thank you.
And I think the sign would not be a distraction to drivers, because it's just there, it's not
You'd have to be looking for it. I mean, so unless you drive it down the road like this, you don't think you're going to, you're going to see it. So I agree, I don't think the, the colors on the seal are going to be a problem for us to waive that requirement.
I have one, just one concern about, I wish, you know, from architectural point of view, that the steeples could be taller and bigger, of course. My, my only concern is, I don't know if there's a survey, but because the slope of the, the site grades away and down, that thirty-five feet is measured from the average grade. So in reality, the, the steeples would be considerably smaller. That's my only concern.
I thought the general idea was that the steeples would match the peak of the roof? So if you drew a line from the peak of the roof out to either side, you'd get the top of the steeples? You would think, you think they should be taller?
Architecturally taller, I don't know any
Code-wise, I think it could be a problem, depending on how the building inspector determines the height.
We, we follow the, the maximum height.
Building department already, he told you how high you could go?
Correct.
Okay. Gotcha. They crossed a, that, that high already. Public hearing, gay, nay? I don't think so either. No? Okay. All right, so now administrative business. I will offer a motion to type, this is a type two action on the secret. Okay, second?
Second.
Second, any questions? All in favor? All right. I will offer a motion to grant the waiver for the sign, the sign logo seal colors.
Second.
Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I will also offer a motion to waive the public hearing as it is in the best, is in best interest of the public, as I don't feel this is a huge change to the neighborhood and it's going to make the area look better than it already does.
Second.
Second, pick one. Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, secret truth.
Drafting?
Draft the, authorize council to draft a resolution of approval. Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
See you on the fifteenth.
There's not an increase in what are you saying?
Um, Chris, just to, kind of, for the purpose of the applicant, this will be listed on the March fifteenth agenda also.
Yep. Everything's being pushed to the, the first just will... Um, no, I, trust me, I believe you, I don't want anything else on that agenda as it is. Sorry, we'll just give the room a second to... Tell you, let's start selling tickets to our... And a fixed-up charge by, they're, they're doing a whole new sample where they like, they like cut the whole place. A lot of work. All right. Okay. Eight Sunny Lane, I think is what we're up to. ARB Abraham, sorry if I got the name wrong. Eight Sunny Lane Review And Discuss Documents Submitted For ARB Enrich Preservation. A Proposed Second Floor Addition To An Existing Single Family Dwelling. Said Property Is Located At Eight Sunny Lane In Highland Mills. Known As The Village Of Woodbury Tax Maps. Section 217 Block 1, Lot 5. Just one second, one there. That's when we're gonna have to empty your room out, huh? That's when we're gonna empty your room out. Now we're back to the planning meeting, planning board meetings of old. All right, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, my name is Joel Eckstein, I'm here for Abraham Schlaf, for Eight Sunny Lane. I'll give a summary of the, of the, um, project there. So what the client is trying to do is, they have right now a single, a one-story, one-story house with four bedrooms. And, uh, they are trying to expand the, um, some of the areas of the daytime use. So they have, they, they wanna add, um, dining room area and playroom, couple of study room. So they wanna utilize the first floor, this, this floor for the daytime use and then they wanna add the bedrooms, they wanna shift up the bedrooms to the upper floor, adding a partial second floor to it. So the, um, they, they have right now four bedrooms and there's gonna be four bedrooms upstairs and the, the rooms downstairs will be utilized differently. Um, we have, we have submitted the, um, a survey. There's no changes to the footprint of the building. I, I know, I noticed the comment for the, for the deck that we're adding, so that, that goes into the setback area, which we can remove if we have to. But otherwise, there's no, um, changes to the footprint of the building, so there's no changes to the, to the property. So that's why we didn't have, add a bulk table and, um, because we have no changes to that. And we are proposing the, um, the, we submitted a rendering, call it rendering of the house. Uh, we're doing, we're doing, like, in the front of the building, we'll be, two colors, we'll have the stone and the siding, aluminum siding in the front and then on the side and towards the back, we'll have the vinyl siding. I brought with me samples if we have to look at it. And, uh, the rest of the material that we provided, it's basically that, the project that we done.
Thank you, sir. Questions for the applicant? Natalie?
Sure, um, so our memo, uh, was issued February ninth. Mr. Eckstein kinda went over some of our comments already, so, um, just to kinda reiterate, uh, this is an ARB Enrich Preservation Application, um, for a property that was approved as a year-round use, um, on Sunny Lane back in 2009. Um, at that time, the building inspector provided an interpretation that the non-conforming bulk requirements of the law were conditions that pre-existed the applicable zoning requirements at that time and did not require further relief. Uh, we had asked for a plot plan showing the improvements to the site so that we can confirm if any changes, um, would impact the bulk criteria. And I understand that, um, the building footprint isn't changing, but I know that there are decks being proposed and possibly changes to access, um, to the building. So if that was going to occur, then the plot plan showing those improvements should be provided. Um, we did note, I think, that, um, for porches and decks, um, above the first floor, there is a certain requirement for setback from property lines, so that will need to be confirmed on a plan. The applicant provided the information for you to consider ARB. Uh, some of our comments in that section of our memo note that the comparison homes are two hundred and a thousand feet away, um, from the subject property. So, uh, you know, we've asked the board to consider whether or not you would like to review information for other properties and homes on Sunny Lane, um, which is the same street as the subject application. Um, with respect to fridge preservation, the applicant did provide photos from the view corridor for you to consider visibility, um, as long as that information is acceptable to you. Um, you know, you can make a determination or waive any requirements of the fridge preservation code for which you deem appropriate. Um, otherwise, you can request additional information from the applicant. We have asked the board to consider whether herringbone would be an acceptable color as earth tone or neutral, um, in the code, that's how it's listed and required. Um, but again, if it's not visible, you can also waive that requirement. The code also requires that roof slopes follow the natural contour of the land where possible, so it's something that the board should consider with respect to the applicant's renderings that were provided. Um, we've asked the applicant, I guess, this is a moot point if the building footprint isn't changing, but whether any trees were gonna be removed, um, as part of this addition, but it seems not so, the applicant can confirm in response to our memo. Um, and then otherwise, uh, we noted that the property is served by an individual well-inseptic. Uh, no additional bedrooms are proposed and we did circulate the executed projected water and sewer demand form for the board and also the applicant. And then, um, I think at this time, uh, the board can consider whether a public hearing should be scheduled or waived as permitted by your code and also, um, I'll defer to counsel on recommendations for seeker.
Questions for Natalie?
Type two.
Hmm? Type two. I was gonna say it's type two, right? Anybody take exception, comments or concerns about the overall design of the new home? Yeah, it's, uh, mixed houses down there, a lot of rundown, too. So, yeah, as far as the design, I don't take any exception. What about colors? Uh, the herringbone, the whites always tends to, um, be a source of discussion for the board.
What's the, um, I see there are two wood-like products, which is which, or what is for what? There's one cedar and then there's one walnut. Where are they, are they both on the facade or are they...
You're referring to which colors? I'm sorry.
There's a river wood and then there's an English walnut on your last page. Nine.
Yeah, that walnut, I believe, is for the, um, for the deck.
Okay.
I have a sample of this if you want, if you wanna see it.
If you have one, take a, take a peek at him. So that's the stone?
Yep.
You can just put it on a chair if you want, Lynn. My God, if you get mugged in the parking lot, you just use that thing to hit them with. That's the deck, okay.
Okay.
Okay. So that's the three, other three sides of the building, okay. Yeah, I think we've talked about the herringbone before. It's not really like a white, even though it has bone in the, in the color. It's kind of a very muted, off-white, yeah. Black shingles, right? Rustic black. Okay. I mean, I don't, I think it's, like you guys were saying before, I think it should look nice, then I go ahead.
Yeah, I think my, my only architectural comment would be that I feel, is personally, that the wood and the stone just seem very high contrast, but that's just my opinion on it.
Yeah, if you, I think if you drive down there, you're gonna notice it's a very popular, um, style of home, the stone and the wood. So actually fits into all the newer remodeling that's going on down there. All right, I mean, do we feel we need a, do we feel we need a public hearing? No?
No.
Yes, because there are the comparison homes and maybe people...
So three no's and one yes.
Isn't the Bakers Town Home kind of a comp?
Yeah, that's very similar.
That one's a...
Just for, just for your reference, typically what we ask is that you draw a three-hundred-foot radius around the project site and those are the homes we tend to use for comparison. Okay, that's more of, um, I feel like if you drive around, you could find homes that are gonna fit what you're looking for. So typically, we kinda wanna see the neighborhood.
Okay.
So we can, this board will take a ride down there and, and take a look, but just for future submissions, just so you know.
All right.
Oh, we didn't, we didn't make it official, sorry, I had to, uh, sorry, I gotta do an official vote on the public hearing. Sorry. So I'll offer a motion to waive the public hearing. Any, uh, one no, right? And then, yes? Okay, so, three to one, the motion carries to waive the public hearing. The only, I think, really right now, we're gonna type it, I'll, I'll make a motion to type it as type-two under secret.
Second.
Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so you do have a little bit of homework, though, for Natalie, right? We need some of the setbacks then, right?
Yeah, um, just confirmation, I think, at the deck, on the, of the deck at this point and its relationship to the property sideline. So if you could show that on the plot plan, I think that kind of resolves our comments.
So if the, if the deck is, if the deck is gonna be a problem with the setbacks, um, we can, we can remove the deck. I wouldn't wanna hold this up, so I would just, uh, agree to...
Are you gonna chop the deck off right now, is that what you're saying, or...
No, that's, that's a proposed, the, we have, we have, we have an existing deck in the front, which we don't change. We may improve, we may just redo the materials of it, but, but we're not, we're not changing it. The only problem is with the, with the deck that we added on the second floor. So if you see, if you look at the, at the plans, that's gonna be... Pitch six or twelve? We have the deck, the right side, we have a deck at the right side. So it's gonna be less than, it's gonna be less than twenty feet. Right now, there's twenty-one feet, so it's gonna, it's not gonna, it's not going to comply, so we'll just remove that deck, so we don't have to, um, go for variances for this, so.
All right, so can you just, um, update the drawing?
I will.
Get rid of that, then?
Sure.
Okay. All right, um, and owns, uh, own well, so that would be there. Um, so I'll offer a motion to have council draft a resolution of approval. Second, any questions? All in favor? Probably on the fifteenth.
All right.
Sorry, March, March, March first meeting's closed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving along, next item on the agenda. ARB Ideal Design, uh, sorry, ARB For Ideal Design Slash Clum, sixty-five Catskill Review Documents Submitted For Proposed ARB Enrich Preservation For Modifications To A Single Family Dwelling To Include A Two-Story Rear Edition And Partial Conversion Of A Garage To Mudroom And Seasonal Kitchen. Said Property Is Located At Sixty-five Catskill High Rail In Central Valley And Is Known As The Village Of Woodbury Tax Maps. Section 255 Block 3, Lot 41. Just for the record, the board did receive, and everybody should have received, an email copy of, of a neighbor commenting on the project. If they weren't for the project.
Uh, yeah, we're talking about the, my name is Yitzhak Stein, I'm with Ideal Design and, uh, I'm coming about the project Sixty-five Catskill High Rail, uh, two-story addition to the existing rear side only to the house. No trees are being removed, uh, and, uh, we did submit the updated documents, uh, for the board and I hope everything looks good.
Anyway, we convince you to add a couple more trees between you and your neighbor?
Sure.
Go ahead, Natalie, sorry.
Sure, no, it's okay. Um, we, again, similar to the other applications, we provided a memo dated February ninth. Um, this application has been before you for a few times already previously, but, um, there is still some additional information, uh, that's needed from the applicant to confirm their proposal and also just consistency among the materials that were submitted. Um, I think that that information could be provided in a future submission, so I'm just gonna kinda jump to the comments that I think require some discussion with the board. Um, the first is that the applicant provided a photo from Route 32 at the Route 17 overpass toward the location of the home, um, to, in an attempt to demonstrate visibility from the view corridor. Uh, we've noted that it seems like a better location for that photo may be, um, at the entrance to the elementary school, uh, the northeastern entrance. Um, it seems like properties in Woodbury Junction are more visible from that location than any others along the Route 32 corridor. So, um, we've recommended that the applicant provide that and/or that the board discuss whether or not this home is visible, because, you know, you guys drive that route every day, so you may know one way or the other. Um, with respect to other ridge preservation criteria of the code, as you know, the code requires earth tone and neutral colors. It excludes white as a permissible color. Um, the applicant already confirmed that the existing structure is white and it's their intent to match the same. Um, the code allows the planning board discretion to permit the use of non-natural building materials where the existing structure is constructed with non-natural materials. So you should consider compliance with your code or a waiver under that circumstance. The applicant has advised that no trees are needed to be removed to construct this addition. Um, but we did note that the original landscaping plans, uh, for WP3 showed a significant tree stand that was intended to remain at the rear of the applicant's property with additional plantings that were required. You recently reviewed another application in WP3 where you, um, had requested that the applicant provide supplemental plantings to offset the vegetation that was removed. Um, so we've recommended that you consider whether or not that's appropriate for this application. The only other thing that I just kinda wanted to mention is that, um, the plan does show, uh, fence encroachment onto the adjacent town property. Um, they've updated the plan to indicate that the fence will be removed to correct the encroachment. Um, but with that being said, um, we've recommended you kinda review whether or not there should be a condition in your resolution, if you move to approval, um, to A, either require compliance with that or B, to basically indicate that the board would not be approving the use of or location of any encroachments on an adjacent property. The projected water and sewer demand form needs to be revised to indicate that no new bedrooms are proposed. Um, you already concluded seeker and I think that, um, a public hearing waiver or, uh, scheduling needs to be decided still on the...